Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone at home and abroad and ships at sea to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for May 12, 2021. We're a little bit late, but we're starting the meeting at 9:12. And at this time, I'd like to confirm the agenda. Are there any emergent items from any of the councillors for this public meeting? Seeing none, is there anything from administration?
Yes, your worship. Thank you very much. We would like to move the in-camera item 11.1, item pertaining to Section 241A, to item 4.2, right after the Calgary Metropolitan Regional Board.
Thank you very much. And now, having heard that, council, is anyone prepared to make a motion to confirm the agenda as amended? Councillor Sobel, thank you. We have a motion to confirm the agenda as amended by councillor Sobel. All in favor? And that motion is carried. We have no presentations, and it brings us to delegations. 4.1 Calgary Metropolitan Region Board. And I believe this morning, we have a few people from the CMRB. And I'd like to welcome you all this morning. Jordan, it's good to see you again. Charlie and your staff. I don't know you as well as some of the others, but I welcome you here this morning for your presentation to us. And who is Jordan? Are you going to be doing introductions and starting us off?
Yes, if that works for you, your worship.
Thank you and welcome, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you so much, your worship members of council. It's a pleasure to be here again. So today, we have with us Charlie Hales of HDRC, as well as Jonathan Schmidt. And they will be presenting on the first two portions of the presentation. And Jamie Graves, project manager, intermunicipal servicing for the CMRB, will be presenting on the servicing plan today. We're going to give you a little bit of a background, and then really, the focus of the presentation on the growth plan is what has changed since we were here in February. We'll do the entire presentation, and then we're happy to take any questions at the end, if that works for you, your worship and council.
Yes, that sounds good. Thank you.
Great. So thank you so much. I'll ask Charlie to take us away.
Thanks, Jordan. Good morning, your worship members of the council. We appreciate the chance to have some dialogue with you this morning. We're going to move fairly quickly through this presentation in interests of respecting your time, but obviously can return to any of these items and go into greater detail as you have time for questions and discussion. So I'm going to start with just a quick recap of where we are and what we have been about in this planning process. I know you've all been engaged in this, but it's been going on for a while. So a quick recap. Next slide, please. We, you know, we've begun this work with this team and working with all 10 municipalities and the CMRB to develop this plan. Next slide. We relied on some principles that the board adopted and that were part of the interim growth plan in part, and those have guided our work along with a great deal of dialogue and negotiation among the municipalities as we worked through the issues. Next slide, please. You know, why do this? Well, one, to be globally competitive and to keep attracting young talent and economic growth. To be efficient, to build better communities and to use resources wisely. And these are principles that already are in force. I've been very impressed in my early visit in Strathmore at how well you've done in creating a quality urban environment in your town. And that's what we want to reinforce in this plan. One of the great strengths of this region, and something that both Peter Calthorpe and I have commented on, is you're not executing in a 180-degree turn here. You're making a course correction or two in what has generally been well-managed growth so far. Next slide. You know, one thing going for you is you have a lot of approved land already in approved area structure plans. There's plenty of land supply, but not all of that growth is really ideally located. And there are going to be new opportunities. So the reason to plan regionally and make some adjustments is to not simply make sure you have enough land, but that you are positioned for the growth of the future. Next. This chart just shows the, really, the pretty generous supply of land available versus the land that's required to meet the projected million new residents. Obviously, Strathmore and most of the other municipalities have more, has considerably more land available than will probably be required by the market. That's good. You've got headroom and room to make adjustments as you see fit over time. Next. As I mentioned, there are a lot of existing ASPs in the region, industrial, residential, commercial. And those stand. Existing ASPs can be built out under the regulation and under the plan. But some new areas for focused growth have been a big part of our effort. Next slide. So again, a million people over the next some years. It's more about the total accommodation of this growth rather than attempting to forecast exactly how quickly it occurs. We started from the beginning with some projections about how much each municipality would be anticipated to absorb within that growth. And we've stuck with those projections, again, with the understanding that there's enough land that if there's some shifts over time, those can be accommodated. We created three scenarios to test possible futures. One, we call business as usual, which is, just as it sounds, pretty much carrying forward the practices and development patterns that you've been experiencing. One focusing a lot on transit, transit-oriented development. And one focusing on really reinforcing existing cities and towns in the region, which we called compact. And we ultimately ended up, for purposes of developing the plan, with a synthesis of those that, yes, does have more transit in it, but isn't relying on enormous investments in transit as the keystone of the plan. And which does indeed focus quite a bit of growth into a more compact form in existing municipalities and in some targeted growth areas. Next slide. The benefits of this are pretty profound. Big reductions in the amount of water, money, and land that are consumed in order to accommodate those million people. And big reductions in the side effects of vehicle kilometres travelled and in carbon. So there are very substantial monetary and environmental benefits to developing for the next million people this way versus that business-as-usual scenario. Next slide. You know, there's some really key characteristics of this plan versus other regional plans around North America. Really, three. One is this use of place types, that we used these place types as analytical tools, and then they also show up in the plan itself in terms of what is anticipated within each municipality over time. This is a different approach than most regional planning efforts that have been more regulatory. This is more about thou shalt than thou shalt not. It encourages the use of infill redevelopment, mixed-use, and master-plan communities as opposed to generic subdivisions, rural sprawl, and generic employment areas scattered around the region. And this reliance on place types is a unique characteristic of the Calgary Plan. Another important feature of this plan is the use of joint planning areas where municipalities will work together to plan these high-growth areas. And that's really the third element as well, cooperation. That the plan relies heavily on intermunicipal cooperation, which is already a value and a practice in the region. So again, next, yeah, that's fine. Move to the next slide. So this region is, again, dealing from strength. You've done a good job, but you can do better. You can save money. You can use less land. You can use water more efficiently. You can work, rebuild, or sorry, reinforce the tendency to work together in cooperation. And yes, you should plan on more transit. Transit is an important element in concentrating this growth, not, again, the only strategy, but an important one. And over time, we think it will become more important. Next slide. So with that very quick summary of how we got to where we are now, now Jonathan is going to walk you through some key changes that have been made in the draft plan since we last briefed you in February. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jonathan Schmidt.
Thank you, Charlie. I'm going to go through, to begin, the changes to the growth management section of the growth plan. It is one of the most important sections of the plan. And so I'll begin there. So there's three fundamental strategies that underpin the growth plan and especially underpin the growth management policies within the plan. Number one, a focus on compact mixed-use place types. As mentioned by Charlie, this is key to the plan, is that to try to do more compact development. And it has numerous benefits, environmental, social, and economic. And those aren't conflicting, economic and environmental and social, aren't at odds with each other when you develop great communities. Secondly, focusing growth in key growth areas. So rather than having a growth boundary within the region, we've identified in the draft plan these preferred growth areas. It says joint planning areas here, but there's actually now three types of preferred growth areas. Joint planning areas being one, hamlet growth areas being another, and then urban municipalities being the third. And then, thirdly, rural areas are reinforced with a focus in a direction towards more cluster development and then preservation and conservation of agricultural land. I would add environmental land, too. And appropriately scaled commercial and hamlet growth. Next. If you're familiar with the growth plan, this is the key map that guides where growth will happen. And as mentioned, there's these proposed preferred growth areas made up of the seven urban municipalities. Seven hamlet growth areas. So you have three within Rocky View County. You have three to be named later within Foothills County. And then Sheedle, which is close to Strathmore, within the Wheatland County CMRB area. So those collectively make up the preferred growth areas within the region. The adjustments that have been made since February include an expansion of the Bright Creek Hamlet Growth Area, about a quarter section in size, I believe. And then the joint planning area between Oketoks and High River was split into two. So it's now a joint planning area three and four. The other joint planning areas, I should note, number one is in the north between Erdrea and Calgary and inclusive of lands within both Erdrea and Calgary. JPA 2 is around Chestamere with lands within Rocky View and Calgary and Chestamere. Charlie covered this, but just a further emphasis that the plan really pushes growth towards these preferred place types, which are types of development and types of communities that have numerous benefits, as mentioned, and really have a greater mix of both housing and jobs in that the region should move away from this single-use development where you're simply developing subdivisions with a single detached housing form, where you're reliant on automobiles for your sole transportation needs, and really pushing the region to use these preferred place types more. So how does the plan push towards those preferred growth areas and those preferred place types? Well, here's a summary. And I'll just start at the bottom because I was mentioning those preferred place types. And so within Calgary, 90% of future development must be within those preferred place types and be done in that way. Within other urban municipalities, it's 75%. And then within hamlet growth areas, it's 60%. So you may ask then, well, what is the remaining percent? The remaining percent is flexibility to do some of those traditional, less desired, perhaps, single-use residential communities or traditional subdivisions. So there is flexibility within the plan, but really trying to push the region towards these preferred place types. And there are minimum densities, as mentioned here. And then employment areas where they can be located. And a few other elements here in terms of what the options and what the policy direction is between the urban municipalities and the counties. So a few of the key policy changes that have occurred since February, and this is obviously all contingent upon the draft plan as written, being adopted by the board. Number one is the splitting out of employment areas and small employment areas. So previously, the growth plan pushed all employment areas within preferred growth areas. And there is now draft policy that would allow small employment areas, 20 acres or less, to be located within the counties as long as they're two kilometres away from an urban municipality. You know, they could be located anywhere in the counties, viewing that as not significant in size, you know, to impact anybody else. Secondly, the allowance for expansion of hamlet growth areas. So the previous policies looked at hamlet growth areas but didn't have policy pertaining to, well, what if they grew in size? And how would they expand? What is the criteria? And so there's now, I believe, seven criteria it is that the board would look at if the hamlet growth area would need to be expanded. So in your case, you know, Sheedle or farther away would be Langdon, perhaps. What if it wanted to expand under the growth plan? And there's a number of criteria there. One is proving that the expansion is needed through market interest and land demand. And the other is collaboration with neighbours. And there's a few other criteria as well. And then further, there is some additional clarifications within other elements of the plan. And then refining policies around existing area structure plans outside of these preferred growth areas. Because as Charlie mentioned, we're trying to push everything towards these preferred growth areas. And existing ASPs are grandfathered to an extent. And so trying to address that in the policy language has been approved over the past few months. So I'm now moving on to other sections of the draft growth plan. One is economic wellbeing. And additional policies have been added on active transportation in that not just municipal development plans should address this, but all statutory plans. And I think that's fairly logical. Next. Water stewardship. Water efficiency is a very important topic within the region, and so additional policy language has been added. Next. Shared services. So Jamie will present the servicing plan in a minute here. But the linkage within the growth plan to the servicing plan is this shared services optimization section. And following numerous discussions on regional corridors, additional policy language has been added to address infrastructure in multi-use corridors. So as Charlie mentioned, HDRC undertook an extensive scenario planning analysis, and that is summarized in Appendix A. And that's all I have. Pass it off to Jamie now.
Thanks, Jonathan, and good morning, Mayor Fuel and members of council. I'll be presenting on the servicing plan in its draft form right now. A few things to note about the servicing plan that we really tried to be diligent and staying close to the direction given by the regulation from the province, and that is to be in support of the growth plan. And so you'll see and note that there are many ties throughout the draft servicing plan that refer to elements of the growth plan. And that's on purpose. A few of the key components that I'll run through are that the preferred growth areas that are identified in the growth plan, and so that's the hamlet growth areas, urban municipalities, and joint planning areas, are the priority servicing areas for the board for the life of this iteration of the plan. So the servicing plan is meant to be revisited in five years' time. Just something to note there. And so another thing that the servicing plan recognizes is that the municipalities make a commitment to find cost-effective and efficient servicing solutions together for growth that aligns with the growth plan. And also, the servicing plan is built on three pillars. And each of those pillars are reflected and discussed for each of the servicing areas. And those servicing areas I'll address in the next slide. But for the purposes of the pillars, the first pillar is servicing priorities. So this is meant to direct collaborative servicing investment in terms of dollars and also person-hours of the municipalities administrations to preferred growth areas. Again, preferred growth areas being urban municipalities, hamlet growth areas, and joint planning areas. The second pillar are working groups. And this is a creation of broad regional approach to collaboration through the use of working groups. And those working groups are made up of member municipalities, subject matter experts for the various types of servicing that are being addressed. And then pillar three being evidence-based decision-making. This ties back to the values and goals of the board, ensuring that data collection, reporting, and monitoring are undertaken to support decisions made by the board. And all of these three pillars are driving the actions that are identified in the servicing plan, some of them being region-wide components and some being subregional. As I mentioned in addressing those pillars, the servicing priorities that are identified by the board at this time include transportation and transit, a long-term water strategy, water and wastewater utilities, stormwater management, and finally, recreation. So these elements came out of board direction as the best places where we can get value from collaborative energies by each of the municipalities. And around transportation and transit, I'll just kind of go through a few of the priorities and actions that were identified in the servicing plan. Context studies in joint planning areas are a tool that will be used to address how current plans and future plans in a particular joint planning area would address transportation and transit in each of their plans. And so we look at that in a context study and identify if there are any gaps. And from that learnings, apply that in the future to regional transit and transportation master plan. This would include updating the regional transportation model and knitting together the outcomes of those context studies. In this plan, we would also address corridors that were not addressed in the context studies because they're not perhaps located in a JPA. And one of the key components is that this master plan would be multimodal. And so not just considering vehicles, single-occupant vehicles, but also from a goods movement perspective, from a transit perspective, walking, recreating, passive recreation corridors, et cetera. And finally, for regional economic development, one of the things that have been identified by the board as something that they are interested in in the future, transportation corridors can support those regional economic development efforts. And so that would also be something that would be brought forward through the transportation master plan. A long-term strategy for water would include a number of areas that are currently being dealt with by others in the region. And so the municipalities are interested in finding how that the regional group could fit into many of the priorities that are already being addressed through other groups, including perhaps BRBC and others. That includes watershed planning, connecting to the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan, working with the province, advocating for enhanced protection of watersheds that are very important to the CMR, looking at water use and efficiency. Opportunities for learning, so outcomes of those context studies in joint planning areas may feed into a long-term water strategy and continue with working groups that have been established in the development of the growth and servicing plans and involving external stakeholders where appropriate. In terms of water and wastewater utility priorities, one of the key findings is that overall, a broad regional approach is not recommended at this time, given the life of the servicing plan, which, again, is five years. And so instead of a broad regional approach, the subregional is the preferred approach to water and wastewater utility priorities. In this way, we will focus on collaborative solutions in preferred growth areas where they are needed and optimizing service delivery through focused collaboration, considering the location, the level of service, cost and benefit impacts to the municipalities involved, levies, and other factors that are deemed relevant by the working groups and municipalities. Stormwater priorities. One of the key things that have come out of many discussions around water in the region over development of the growth and servicing plan has been the opportunity of stormwater use and water reuse. This is seen as a major opportunity for innovation within the region because we have limited resource and want to make the best and highest use of that. Stormwater use and water reuse is seen as a key opportunity for the municipalities that they wish to advance. Other regional initiatives include coordination with other regional stakeholders. So some of the Nosehill Creek watershed management plan and groups such as those. And then as well, context studies that may identify subregional gaps in conveyance or drainage. That information can be worked through with the member municipalities that are participating in those context studies. And additionally, any water quality or capacity of receiving waters, gaps that might be identified through that process. Finally, recreation priorities, which I know is very close to Strathmore's heart. The Recreation Working Group would continue to identify regional and subregional priorities, but this would be on a case-by-case basis. And so this wouldn't be an active group except for when there are opportunities identified, and those may be at a subregional scale as opposed to region-wide. And this was determined to be diligent with the resources of the municipalities. But currently, a lot of collaborative work is being done in this space. And so just to carry forward of that. From there, the implementation of the servicing plan really relies heavily on one of those pillars, which is the working groups. Again, these groups have been identified in this graphic, but there may be other working groups that emerge based on the priorities of the board as we explore that in the next months following the approval of the growth and servicing plans. And so these groups would be responsible to the committees of the board and to the board, obviously, and would include at times regional stakeholders or perhaps municipal and consultant experts as required. And finally, I think that brings us to the end. We're looking forward to questions. I'll pass it back to you, Jordan. Do you have any final or closing comments?
No, thank you so much, Jamie. We're just happy to answer any questions or address any comments that council may have.
Thank you all of you for your presentations. Are there comments or questions from councillors regarding this presentation? I think you're on mute, Councillor Peterson.
Sorry, I was having trouble. Sorry about that. In the first section of the presentation, there was a very brief mention of incompatible land uses. I was just wondering if they could provide an example of that? Just for my edification, what would that look like?
I'll take a shot at that, Mayor Fuel, and then Jonathan may want to comment. Incompatible land uses would, I mean, we don't specifically define that because, again, this is more of a thou shalt plan than a thou shalt not. Thou shalt try to use these preferred place types to at least, in your case, to a 75% extent of the kind of growth that you get. You know, an incompatible use would be a large commercial development outside of a preferred growth area. You know, out in the farmland. An other shopping mall out in the farmland would be an incompatible use.
Thank you. And your worship, I appreciate that response. And the other thing that I wanted to say is just an overall impression of CMRB and what I'm seeing here. And I'm so very, I guess, amazed at the juxtapositions I see between the work of the CMRB and the teachings that I've learned about in my 25 years of working in indigenous communities. And it's so interesting to see this long-term... And it's so interesting to see this long-term approach where we can really see ourselves as both ancestors and descendants in this plan. And I am very, very grateful for that because I think that in politics particularly, there is such a tendency to be reckless. And, you know, because we, you know, we set up numeric values and we're rewarded for meeting those numeric values. And sometimes they're very short-sighted and very short-term. So to have something such as this, I find it very compelling, and I am very appreciative of it. And so I really thank you for all your work and for our representatives on that board. I'm very grateful. Those are all my comments. Thank you, worship.
Well, if I may comment, I'm glad this is being recorded because I'd like to replay your comment there, councillor Peterson, to others. That's well said. That's a sensibility that we all hope to achieve.
Thank you, councillor Peterson. Any other comments or questions from council? Seeing none, thank you all for your presentation this morning and being with us. We appreciate you going through this. I know some of our councillors haven't had a great deal to do with CMRB and the goings-on and the plannings and the working towards that final plan and report. But I appreciate you all being here and presenting to us like this. Jordan, did you want to wrap up for the CMRB?
Thank you so much, your worship and members of council. We always appreciate the input we get from all of our members. So if there's something that you think of after the fact, oh, you know, I meant to ask about this, please never hesitate to reach out to us. That's what we're here for, and we're happy to answer your questions or explain things more fully.
Thank you very much, Jordan, and I look forward to our phone conversation tomorrow. Thank you all for presenting again. Have a great day. Enjoy the sunshine, if you can, wherever you are, Charlie.
Here, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm looking for a motion to go in camera. And I believe you'll see the section number for FOIP underneath 4.14.1. Councillor Peterson? Councillor Sobel?
Your worship, do we need a motion to accept the CMRB growth and servicing plan update?
Yes, we do, sorry.
I would like to make that motion that council accept the CMRB growth and servicing plan update for information purposes.
Thank you for that. You've all heard the motion, all in favor?
And I'd also move that we go into camera, in camera, your worship.
Thank you. And we have a motion from councillor Sobel to go in camera at 9:45. All in favor?